Good evening. This is the May 23 meeting of the Winter Town Council. Take the roll call.
Councilor Inman.
Here.
Councilor Calhoun.
Present.
Councilor Boncory.
Here.
Councilor Lutiere.
Yep.
Councilor Boyadji.
Yep.
Councilor Barone.
Present.
Councilor Dabento.
Yep.
Vice President Sampin.
Here.
President Gascón.
Here.
We have the minutes from last week, I mean from last meeting. You can have those.
Motion.
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 The amendment said the comments. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. I'm going to take the liberty that I have as council president to move up in the agenda before we get into all these public hearings because we have a lot of them tonight. I'm going to move up into the agenda, the school committee meetings that have been happening recently. And there have been like three, I think the 8th, the 15th, and last night, the school committee met and we were interviewing candidates for both the interim town council and the president. I'm Tom. So we're the interim superintendent position. And so it is, we've been going through that, it's been a solid change management process. You know, it's been difficult. This is the update of the school committee. Won't have to happen later. But basically, we voted last night, it was a four to three vote with respect to two candidates. And it was difficult, it was a tough, tough decision. And yet it happened. And I went home, I got home about, I don't know, 9:30, 10 o'clock last night. And the, so, I just watched TV, had a peanut butter sandwich, and I went to bed. And I got up this morning about nine, I mean 6:30, and basically started hearing a lot of correspondence from folks about some things posted on social networks, about the meeting, a whole bunch of negative things from various people, including folks who are elected officials, people who aren't in committees. And I, well, that's interesting, that happens often actually. And so I thought, okay, that's another day. Anyway, so I went to go to work. And I went, I got in my car, got into my car, and I drove to East Boston, I work at East Boston Health Center. And I know, losing my car is a little wobbly. And so I left on Bennington, and I almost hit the cars parked on the side of the street. And I'm like, whoa, what's up? Got nothing to say about it. So I drove home, had a flat tire. And I went home and I saw that somebody, after the meeting between probably 10:00 PM last night and 7:00 o'clock this morning, somebody had actually put a screw in my tire. And I'm going to tell you something, I got a line, I got a line that I draw. And that could have been driven by anybody in my family. It could have been driven by my wife, it could have been driven by my kids, my brother-in-law took it over the weekend. And it was a really awful thing for anybody to do. And I'm telling you right now, as a result of that, I draw the line with my family. I'm not having my family be threatened, and I'm not going to have my family be subject to physical harm. And so as a result of that, I'm going to tell you right now, tonight, I'm resigning from this position. And I'm going to do that effective immediately. And it's because of that. And that's it. So I'm going to leave the meeting. I mentioned this to council chairman. I apologize to all the people in the community who have supported me, but I'm telling you that there is an element in this town that is extremely negative, extremely violent. And for guys and women like us on this council, you know, other committees volunteer to do this, to have to be put up with that kind of crap is ridiculous. And so I wish you well. Have a good evening. I hope the meeting goes well without leave. Take care.
I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess. Based on the information we just received, I'm going to call for an emergency executive session. We'll be out as soon as we can, but we'd like to, we'd like to meet, yep.
For the purpose of what?
Based on the information we just received. Hang on, hang on, I'll look one up.
I want to know what, how this proof that somebody put a screw in his tire, I want the...
Excuse me. We're not accepting any public comment at this point in time. Denise, can we have a roll call, vote on emergency executive session, please? Under emergency for public safety. We have a motion to go on executive session, seconded. All, roll call, please.
Councilor Inman.
Yes.
Councilor Calhoun.
Yes.
Councilor Boncory.
Yes.
Councilor Lutiere.
Yes.
Councilor Boyadji.
Yes.
Councilor Barone.
Yes.
Councilor Dabento.
Yes.
Vice President Sampin.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we'll return as soon as possible. Try to keep it short. Guys, obviously, this is something we were not really ready for, and we want to make sure that we follow the open meeting laws, so we're returning to open session for one moment. Councilor Inman, if you don't mind.
Sure, I would like to make a motion to take the executive session item on the agenda out of order and to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing security and strategies with respect there to...
That's been seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilor Inman.
Yes.
Councilor Calhoun.
Yes.
Councilor Boncory.
Yes.
Councilor Lutiere.
Yes.
Councilor Boyadji.
Yes.
Councilor Barone.
Yes.
Councilor Dabento.
Yes.
Vice President Sampin.
Yes.
Unanimous?
And then we should also announce that we're going to return.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, executive session, we will be returning after which we return back to public media. Thank you, first of all, thank you for staying with us. First order of business, ask for a motion to elect a new vice president. Second. From the floor. I would move that we elect Councilor Boncory as vice president, second.
I'll second it.
We need a roll call.
Yes, you do.
Yep. Councilor Inman.
Yes.
Councilor Calhoun.
Yes.
Councilor Boncory.
Yes.
Councilor Lutiere.
Yes.
Councilor Boyadji.
Yes.
Councilor Barone.
Yes.
Councilor Dabento.
Yes.
Vice President Sampin.
Unanimous? Thank you, Phil. Congratulations. I'd like to say thank you, however. We're going to abbreviate our meeting tonight, but we are going to open our meeting with a public hearing relative to the budget fiscal year 18.
We are not making a presentation of the budget tonight. We have made that presentation, council president, last time we met. Hopefully, folks have taken a look at that on WAT or have reviewed the budget and told them where it's available and online, we put it online. Tonight, we are just taking input and commentary. If people have a particular issue, concern, question, they can pose it. A question, we will listen to the question and respond back to the person after the meeting in writing. We can answer those questions, but really, tonight is a night for the public to react to what has been put out and to give their input as to what their thoughts are, their passions, their concerns. And that will all be taken in by the council, deliberated upon, and then the council vote later in the next few weeks or potentially the first week of June, the council will vote on it. So that's basically the process tonight. We're not making a budget presentation that was made last meeting. So I would ask that anyone who has a question or concern, there's a microphone, you can come up and have your voice heard and your comments recorded for the record.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, we're going to ask anyone who'd like to speak to step up to the microphone, identify yourself and...
Hi, Kathy Capuccio, 29-year-old, Mariah. I'm going to apply off the top, but I actually broke behind this evening. I'm here tonight to provide comments on the ferry and the school budget. I hope the town council will vote against transfer of an additional $75,000 from the general stabilization fund to the ferry fund. I hope the council will enter into serious discussions whether we should continue to subsidize the ferry with taxpayer dollars. In theory, the ferry is a great idea, however, the ferry continues to cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars with no end in sight to hemorrhaging the taxpayers' money, with no return on our investment as of now. It is irresponsible to continue to put money into our ferry and lay off teachers in our schools. I think it's wonderful that the town is providing a ferry to some of our students for field trips to Sceptle Island in the coming weeks, but personally, I would rather the town provide teachers in my children's classrooms instead. Since 2013, the taxpayers of Winter have voted in two debt exclusions for the new middle high school and the Middle Field in the amount of $50 million. Citizens are doing their part, and now the town needs to do their part and create more revenue for our town, such as selling and developing. The old middle school, which we have known since 2013, when we voted in the middle school, was going to be vacant. That building still remains vacant as of today, and it's a great source of revenue that is not being looked at. Or if it's being looked at, it's taken quite a long time for something to happen. It's the time the town government and management put in the time and effort needed to move it forward. The town needs to move from being reactive all the time to proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Chief Don Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council, Town Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to have these public discussions because we always don't agree internally as well as externally on budget items. This year, there's an increase in the health budget for peer recovery program that we're very proud of, we've worked hard on, and the manager is funding that an additional $25,000 this year. We need all this support from the council to make sure we get that funding. We're in a unique position at this point in time on the peer coach recovery system as to whether it's going to be successful or not. And I can tell you that without that money, we're not going to be successful. We have a very good program here, we have a unique program here, we've been nationally recognized for this program, just down in Lanta, Georgia in April. And yes, money for every other department is important, but we treat parents, aunts, uncles, children. And our death rate is nothing to be proud of when it comes to opiates. Our hospitalization rates is under 17 in commonwealth. That's nothing to be proud of. We have a lot of work ahead of us, if continued support is necessary, and we certainly need it this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sage Hurley from 96 Johnson Avenue. We're here tonight, and we have students with us for the medical career program. We are coming here tonight to ask for some help to support this program that was instituted back in the 80s. It went by wayside, and due to community interest and a response to the need in the community, we brought the program back last year. We'd like to continue this program. This program is a two-year program which introduces students and young people into health careers, whether it be nursing, outpatient therapy, physical therapy, and so forth. We have placements that were in the process of procuring with hospitals, major Boston hospitals, and community facilities here in the Lethbridge area. We do major support in order to continue this program, and you are our last-ditch efforts. So I would like to introduce some of the students, and they may speak a little bit about the program.
Hi, I'm Danielle Locchio, I'm a senior at Calwata High School, and I'm a part of the medical careers program. So going into the program, I wasn't sure what I wanted to do after high school. I know I want to go to college, but I was thinking about nursing, or going pre-med, or anything like that. So I enrolled in the class, my mom took it, actually, back in the 80s, so she really liked it, so I decided I should too. And it really gave me a feel for what I want to do, like I'm confident in going to the medical field now, and I know that without this class and without the people that came in and taught us these skills that I could actually take and use in life, like applying a tourniquet, or running CPR, or anything like that, like to save someone's life, without knowing those skills and like having these people come in and teach us these things, I don't think that I would choose the career path that I am and go to school at like at USC. I'm going to California for this, so I'm just, it would be a real shame to see this program end and not have people have the opportunity to do this. So I just really hope that there's funding for this for students next year, at least for the juniors to finish, because I didn't have the opportunity, they do, because I'm starting, started this as a senior, so, yeah, thank you.
Hello, I'm Gabriella Hinchin, and I'm a junior at Winter High School, and I too take the medical careers course. And I went to the course not really knowing what I wanted, just because I was starting out, but with the help of these two amazing teachers, I really got to understand the whole, like, full meaning of being in the medical profession. And I do want to be a nurse because of this course, and if I could have this next year, it would be so beneficial to me because I could go to different hospitals and help different people, and I could really get a feel for what it's like to be an actual nurse. They just taught me so many things I can take not even into like the medical profession, but into just regular everyday life, and I thank them for that, and I really hope that you guys can help us have some funding, and I really want this next year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Olivia, sorry. My name's Olivia Robson, and I knew I wanted to change nursing, but nursing programs are really not easy to get into. And it's so rare to have a public school have a medical careers program, and for Winter, that's so great. And like, having that is such a great way to get your foot in the door at a nursing school. And it's just having that degree would be like, just amazing. I learned so much this year, and I just want to do that next year too, and actually have to be able to go into hospitals and actually learn more through like actual doctor, like doctors in our hospital. And like, I learned so much this year that I want to actually have a hands-on opportunity next year, and it'd just be perfect.
So I'm Jean Holberst, 88 Locust Street. I'm also one of the teachers for the program, I'm already a student nurse. I also want you all to know that it is a two-year program, at the end of the two years, all these students are certified in the state of Massachusetts as CNAs so they can work in hospitals, they get a health insurance, dental, 401K, tuition reimbursement. We do have articulations with local community colleges to give credits and to give them to, so it's important for this, daily for the students. And I have those shorts for you guys all, so you can kind of read it in leisure.
Thank you. Councilor Hattie. Thank you so much, it was a great presentation. My understanding is this was funded by a grant that's no longer available, so what is the funding for this program?
Well, what we tried to apply for, the budget was set when we came in last year to do this, so we actually applied for the Boston Foundation Grant, but did not get it. So we were under the understanding that the school was going to be a budget for this year, which obviously didn't happen, it was... So we've reached out to local politicians, and we're trying on that side, but we're not getting anywhere. We're doing the best we can reaching out to hospitals and...
What's the amount, yeah, what's, what's the amount you're looking, you're looking for?
Just a quick thing, they did this for free this year. They taught this medical career program. Just add the money to the other assets, yeah, just wanted to have that in.
Was it 75? What kind of a must are you looking for?
So, Carolyn, a budget person.
Karen, what do we need?
It's a loose number, we're looking at about $75,000 to continue the program for both the new, the incoming junior class and the seniors. And that incorporates clinical instructors. So in order to let the kids go out and work in programs, we need registered nurses to do direct supervision. The piece that we're missing is transportation. We do feel like it would already be incorporated into the school budget, would not necessarily be a different, you know, make a huge difference in the airline out of transportation, but that's the piece we're missing. So you, you're looking really at $75,000.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Julia Wallers. Hi, Julia Wallers. I have the chance to offer, I'll be up on myself as an individual as well as from a friend who's not here today. Is that okay to do one after the other?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. So Julia Wallers, 143 Gordon Street, as you know, chair of the transportation committee, I'm speaking tonight as an individual. As far as the budget, I actually wanted to offer you guys some positives. I went through the budget the last couple days, and I've been pretty excited to see through the points, I just wanted to give some encouragement about those things. Specifically, that there is a, the marketing plan, it is a really great idea to have funds dedicated to marketing with our brand, to attract new residents and economic investment that we need. I was really happy to see funding for our planning consultants to assist our planning board, that's expertise that our town really needs at this time. Re-zoning, sidewalk repair, and the water culture resite, for all the things that I was very happy to see in the budget, so kudos to all that. I definitely do have concerns about the schools and the ferry's funding, like other people, I'm very enthusiastic about having a ferry in our town, but concerned about how the dollars work out, but I think that there, with the vision and very strategic planning, we can make it work, just in light of other issues. I do have reservations considering what's happening in our schools as a mother of a future school-aged child. So thank you, that's all for me, that's me.
Welcome, Julia Wallers.
Hello, Julia Wallers. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my longtime friend Laura Callis, the school committee. Laura writes, "Dear council members," my name is Laura Callis, "and I'm a member of the school committee, I am sorry I can't be there tonight, I teach on Tuesday evenings. I'm writing to ask you to fully fund the budget the school committee requested of you. In order to pay for the increased fixed expenses and provide the same level of service as previous years to our students, we need the amount recommended to you. We have already done so much to reduce costs, including eliminating an administrative position, offering early retirement, restructuring the OT department in order to have more expertise at reduced cost. One of the things I am concerned about is that by not providing the necessary funds, as a town, we are creating higher costs for the long term. For example, we should hire our own board certified teacher analyst rather than paying an external consultant. By having our own VCBA, we would be on a stronger ground to have special education students stay within our district, thus saving out of district tuition fees. Some money spent now saves more money in the long run, but we are not able to do this with a budget that barely allows us to provide level service. Similarly, the town needs to start building a special education stabilization fund, perhaps using some of the Medicaid funds collected as a result of the work of school staff. With such a fund, we would be better able to use our operating budget to increase our capacity to serve both special education and regular education students rather than having to react to unpredictable costs. We must begin to plan for the future instead of always trying to get by with the least resources possible. In the long run, failing to plan long term will cost us more money. Imagine if you spent the least possible amount of money on a car, in the long run, you will end up spending more on repairs. In addition, I have heard suggestions of the schools start creating revenue. The mission of schools is to educate children, not to build revenue. However, there are several ways in which the parents, Viking Pride Foundation, and teachers are already supplementing our budget. Some of our teachers, like many across the country, raise funds for classroom supplies through creating crowdsourcing or from their own pockets. The PTO, extracurricular clubs, athletic teams, and high school classes organize fundraisers. This year, they have raised around $75,000 to $100,000. We have increased our user fees and our facility fees. The Viking Pride Foundation supports a tutoring program for athletes and other students. Please remember that many grants are typically not for operating budgets or providing existing services, they are often for the creation of new programs, which the district then commits to funding in the future. We need the town to commit to fully funding the basic operating costs of the schools and begin to think long term. Sincerely, Dr. Laura Callis." Did you just finish your dissertation? Go, Dr. Laura.
Any other, anybody else done?
Hi, good evening, and thank you, Don Sullivan, PC5. I just want to thank you, Mrs. Capuccio, wherever you are, I echo every single thing she said, Mrs. Hurley, the students who are with you tonight, everything they said, I echo, and Dr. Callis as well. I'm here tonight to ask you to put $500,000 from free cash into a stabilization fund for our special education expenses so that we can put more money back into our general education and help our general education students also excel academically and offer this vocational program again next year to the students who deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, hi, I'm Leanne Lozio, 57 Pleasant Street. I'm here, I work for CASA, Community Action for Safe Alternatives, and I'm here for the Recovery Coach Program. I sent you all an email yesterday detailing a presentation, and I brought copies of that as well, if you wanted to have that for today's meeting. Is it okay for Dana to pass over if you have something in hand? It also has some new information that we were able to obtain today to give you a brief data, data break of the work that we have done and some of the general data that has just recently come out regarding the opiate, the opiate response for the state of Massachusetts. But I'm here today to ask that you guys take another look at the Recovery Coach Program budget. It's really an important program for our community and it's really impactful, and it's making lots of change. And you can probably see some of that data on the form that I gave you. But the main thing that I want to drive home is the ownership of the Recovery Coach Program. The Recovery Coach Program started as a collaboration for a small grant that the town of Winter received. From there, it grew to what you see today, which is, you know, national recognition and towns all across the United States contacting us and asking us how they can implement this program within their community. But unfortunately, grant funding is out, and pretty much out. We're getting, I think, only about $12,000, what? The $12,000 from one grant, sustain that program. And our two recovery coaches that work for the community can go work somewhere else for more money with benefits and security and all the things that come with working for an organization, and they don't have those things here, but at the same time, they're very passionate about their work, they're actually, they couldn't be here tonight because they're meeting with families and doing their work. doing their work, but they can't continue to stay in that way. But the biggest concern that we have, as the volunteers that work for the program to see it continue to grow, is that nobody owns it. It's not affiliated with CASA, it is not a CASA-run program, and it is not a town program. So, right now, it's just kind of sitting in a cloud, and nobody has it. And that is a liability concern for us, it's a liability concern for CASA, it's a liability concern for the town. So, we're asking that the town reevaluate or take a closer look at their budget to talk about ways that we can, as the Town of Winthrop, take ownership of this program and be able to publicize and grow this program as a Town of Winthrop entity. We've created, as myself and Deanna, as well as their supervisor, and all the other individuals that work and volunteer for this, their time for this program, we've created policy and procedure manual, we've detailed all the things that need to happen for a program like this to be a program, and we've talked to other clinical services and other different providers on how these things work, and we've created a program that, that works. The problem is just that nobody owns it, and so it's not going to be able to continue to grow unless somebody can, can step up and do that. And CASA, unfortunately, doesn't have the funds and the resources to be able to take ownership of the program and see it through to its potential. So, I'm hoping that I'll be more than happy, we gave you guys a lot of information, and I'm sorry about that. I'll be more than happy to talk with anybody in more detail about the program, but the program itself is in a make-or-break position right now, and if nobody takes it, then it's going to fall apart and it's going to be over. And we've worked so hard to make this a thing, and we have moved so many mountains around stigma and addiction in our community and supporting people and their families, that we do not want to see that happen. So, we're really hoping that you'll be able to take a second look at that today.
What kind of number are you looking at?
Ideally, forty thousand is what we're looking at, but in, on page five of the packet that I gave you, it outlines the proposed program of what cover all the expenses that's needed with a current, with a program director. Currently, Deanna oversees the program of the town, but that's not in her job description. So, for us to be able to actually have somebody that could oversee the entire program and not be juggling too many things, forty thousand is what's needed, but for the whole team, for the whole program to kind of stay functioning. But the biggest thing is for them to be able to be considered town employees, and a clear program, as we called it, gets to be a Town of Winthrop program, not vendors. Having it as a vendor system has created too many problems, and, and it's just not sustainable, the way that it's currently operating.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you both. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Amelia Cantrovitz, 270 Boden Street. I'm here tonight because I have two kids and the one for public schools. I've been here for five years, and I've met another, a bunch of young families like mine, who all love Winthrop, but inevitably, the conversation turns to, so are you going to stay? Because, you know, the schools. So, when I hear that we're considering cutting teachers and cutting ESPs, it certainly gives me pause. And out of all the numbers tonight, I think two numbers that are significant, two hundred and forty-three out of three hundred and forty, where Winthrop High School ranks in Massachusetts. These numbers are significant, they're significant for all the families thinking about moving here, they look at those, and for families that are thinking about leaving. Why stay? But they're really significant for the kids in the Winthrop Public Schools. So, what I'm asking is that you don't cut any teachers, do not cut any ESPs, and the budget's hard, but I hope you take that into consideration as you move forward.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maggie Hamon, and I'm at the gate to the left, and I'm here to, as a mother, and also as a professional, I'm concerned about the teachers being cut. Professionally, I am a therapist, and I deal with women and children, and I want to talk to you about what I've seen over the twenty years of doing this, and just kind of give you some knowledge about what I've seen. When teachers are cut, the children are not getting what they needed in the classroom, and the teachers are not getting what they need in the classroom. So, that goes on to the home, and some parents are able to handle that stress, and some children are able to handle that stress, and some children are not, and some parents are not able to handle that stress, which has caused conflict. And the teacher cannot sometimes handle that stress. So, we see a domino effect of behaviors, so I'm worried that the educational level will come down, the behaviors will go up. I have seen it time and time again, and I'm hoping that you will see that domino effect as a community come together and not cut those aids in the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia Hamilton, 56 Lowell Road, and I will echo the sentiments of the other parents that were talking about preserving the funding for the schools and making sure that class sizes don't increase to such a point where the education of our kids is impacted. The other thing that's kind of hard, too, is I think this is the second year in a row where the kindergarten cuts have been discussed, and I think that's a really bad way to start off things for our kids, but also to think about what teacher would want to come to the school system and say, oh, every year, they're, you know, they're facing layoffs because we don't have the stability in our budget. So, if you could just, if that could be a priority, making sure that we're not taking money away from the schools, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Quirk, I'm on Hale Avenue, and I'm a recent member of the Airport and Hafords Committee, and I just want to express my disappointment that the budget has cut the, the budget is proposed to be cut by fifty percent for next year, and that's twenty-five percent down from 2015. And Logan Airport wants to expand Terminal E, which could bring up fifteen thousand more flights in Winthrop every year, and so it's a really important time now to cut the funds for that committee. And also, I just think, to give a plug for the ferry, I'm appalled at the ferry deficit, but I also think that if more people were brought to the table and try to work on the problems, that maybe we can get viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding fiscal year eighteen budget? I think we have one more.
Hi, my name's Allison Doer, I live on 178 Boden Street, and I am going to echo every sentiment that this has tonight about the school budget. What Wendy says especially, too, the more children you have in the classroom, the fewer teachers, your special education, what's the word, you're going to have more, you're going to have more kids that are listed as needing special education services, because the teachers can't handle it, so they send them out, and so your special education budget is going to go up, because you're going to have more kids being diagnosed with ADHD, you're going to have more kids being diagnosed as having behavioral problems, simply because a single kindergarten teacher cannot look after twenty-plus kindergarten students in a classroom. Also, I'm perfectly one percent qualified to pull my children out and teach them at home, so I can opt for homeschool, I have a master's in education, and if I do that, and other parents who are also qualified to do that, choose to go that route, the entire school system suffers. Right now, I'm invested. My daughter loves school, my son will be going in soon, he will be a handful, my daughter is not. But, but if people start moving, if they start pulling their kids out and homeschooling them, you lose state funding, you lose other types of funding. And my last point is, we are not currently in a recession, and we are cutting teachers, or we're talking about it, and we went through this last year, and my husband stood up here and spoke. What are we going to do when the new Secretary of Education decides that we're not getting any of the funding that we're used to getting? And now the state can't cover any of the funding, because they're not getting it from the federal government, and we've already cut numerous teaching positions, and we've got these giant buildings that are lovely, but they cannot teach our children, only the teachers can teach our children. And so I think sometimes we've got a little backward, we've got to work, building a football field, how many people does that actually affect? But every single student that enters kindergarten is affected by whether there is one body or two bodies in that classroom. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to step up to the mic and just share some of my thoughts in regards to the recovery coaches.
Could you just give us your name and precinct, please?
Absolutely, precinct, well, Sarko Jebjebian, I'm a sergeant with the Winthrop Police Department. I live on Pleasant Street, near surf cleaners. So, I want to take this moment to talk briefly about the recovery coaches that work in our community. It is my understanding that their pay comes from a variety of different sources, some town money, grant money. Grants dry up, they go away, and in the, in the work that I'm doing, and the work that the recovery coaches are doing, hope is a really important thing. It is fuel for people's fire, it keeps them going. I know the recovery coaches work way over standard forty hours a week. They're there for me and the community whenever I need them, whenever I need a hand, somebody who's struggling with their relationship to intoxicating substances, they're helping day, night, weekend, just on the hope that the position becomes a permanent town position. These two people, they deserve their healthcare covered, and their pay taken care of, and a path for their careers here in our community, and I'm just grateful to have this opportunity to express that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chip McHill, and I'm a recovery coach, and I live here in the Town of Winthrop on Trenton Avenue. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I think that this goes a lot bigger than just two recovery coaches, and I think we're a team that's being assembled, that's been put together, and it's, I guess, being proven and shown that this actually works. I know that I'm out on the streets, and I'm working with addicts and alcoholics in need for recovery, and there's definitely a necessity for this, I see it every day, and I hope you'll seriously consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Danielle Hardin, I totally did not know I was going to be speaking, but I...
Neither did I.
So, I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody. I work primarily with the females in the community. I just want to say how, what this program is and how grateful I am to be a part of it. I'm in long-term recovery. I can't, I guess, Chip and I have the hope of what can happen with recovery, we're trying to solve the heroin epidemic with heroin, with opiates, was the box on a methadone, which works for a lot of people, but I think the answer is recovery, and then one addict speaking to another addict, there's something magical about it. And I think what we're doing is really, really important, and we're fighting stigma every day with the police, or working with the police, addicts and the police, like, that just doesn't usually go together, and it's a beautiful thing that just, just came together. And it's important, it's really, really important work, and that's what I wanted to say.
Close the public comment, public hearing on the budget fiscal year eighteen. At this time, I'd like to accept a motion to continue the remainder of the meeting to our next meeting, which will be held...
We've got to open a public hearing, open a next public hearing, with a motion to continue with...
We're going to open a next public hearing, forgive me, I've got my help to my left and to my right, so thank you so much. We're going to open up the next public hearing. To transfer ninety-five thousand from fund pavement projects, water sewer line item, MWRA contract five.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Okay, it's been a motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting will be, we're going to go through the mall? Okay, let's go through the mall, okay. Transfer a hundred fifty thousand dollars from fund meter upgrade, water sewer line item, MWRA contract five.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, open the public hearing to transfer a hundred fifty thousand, I'm sorry, back up, appropriate, open a public hearing to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars for purpose of financing engineering design in Underhill Hutchinson line item, MWRA contract five.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open a public hearing to transfer five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the water sewer retained earnings fund, new line item, water sewer fund, MWRA contract five.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open a public hearing to appropriate, I'm sorry, open a public hearing to transfer a hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from capital stabilization fund to the general fund grant for the, match the Belle Isle Marsh grant.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open a public hearing to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from the general stabilization fund, the ferry fund.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, open a public hearing to transfer twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the general stabilization fund to the mobile restroom trailer.
Motion to continue that public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council President?
Yes.
I have a motion to suspend council rules and to, a motion to end, to adjourn this meeting, and a motion to suspend council rules and conduct a meeting next Wednesday, May thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, at six, at seven PM in this building.
Okay, motion to meet, I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.